Ahoy, welcome everyone to yet another meeting of the Pirate National Committee. This is your captain speaking, Jolly Mitch of the Chicagoland Night, the Illinois Pirate Party. And I am, as always, a friend of the show. We are going to start with IDs really quick. First person I see is Drew.
Drew Binghamman, Captain of the Pennsylvania Pirates.
Thank you. David?
I'm one of the representatives for Florida Pirate Party.
Thank you. Ty?
United States Pirate Party Vice Captain and West Virginia Officer.
Thank you. Jester?
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Fantastic. Hello, everyone, I'm Jester. Our Indiana, name's Ashley Melody, nice to meet y'all.
Thanks for attending. Wanda?
Wanda Ward, Florida Pirate Party and State Moderator for the US Pirate Party.
Thank you. Blaze?
Hi, Blaze Henry, Scribe of the United States Pirate Party and the Captain of the Arizona Pirate Party.
Thank you. Dustin C?
You there? Dustin, the Arizona Pirate Party, first mate.
Thank you. Eli?
Eli McGee, Massachusetts Representative.
Rowan?
Rowan, inaugural Captain of YP USA and Illinois Pirate Party.
Thank you. And last but not least, we have a guest today. Tim, if you could please introduce yourself.
Tim Grady, independent candidate for Governor of Ohio.
Well, thank you for joining us today. We are looking forward to hearing about your campaign and allowing the Pirate Party to have a chance to discuss. And thank you for taking the time to share that with us.
Absolutely. Exciting.
Thank you. Real quick, I do just want to go back into old business. Last or two weeks ago, we did have a, I thought, pretty spirited discussion, to say the least. I feel as though if there's anything we want to continue from that, that should be the first order of business. Otherwise, I do first want to ask if there are any reports from any committees or states. I'm hearing none.
If I may, go ahead.
Go ahead, Ty.
Just reporting on behalf of the IT Committee, because they are not here, doesn't look like they are. We just think we had an informal meeting and we kind of just, you know, discussed the existing software. And, you know, what the IT people do, you know, things that we like and just things of that nature. So it was just basically getting to know each other as they were just settling into their role and everything like that. So that's about it for that.
Perfect. All right, thank you. All right, if there are no other committee reports or state reports, I will open the floor really quick to see if there is any other comments from from two weeks ago. If we don't have anything right now, we could always get back to this after Timothy Grady gives his campaign pitch. But otherwise, I feel like two weeks ago, it was an important enough conversation to where I feel like an action item should be able to come from it. So if we do decide to come back and make something of it, I'm more than happy to brainstorm and come up with some type of action item that the Pirates can move forward with. But otherwise, I just wanted to, again, leave the floor open just for a moment, see if anyone did have anything from the last two weeks that have been on your mind festering, anything of sorts. No, nothing. Rowan, all right, go ahead.
I was saying, kind of, that's why I was doing my hand, but it's because it's an idea that has been recently introduced to me, like yesterday, to be specific. Like I see stickers, like in Chicago especially, on signposts, on lamp posts, on, in like public areas, so people can see them and interact with them. So I mean, a lot of people don't, but some do. Like they say, oh, this is a cool sticker, they'll take a picture of it, I don't know, post it on their Instagram or Snapchat story. Anyway, sorry. My point being is that there's a public interaction there. And I think there's an opportunity for us to exploit that and maybe we should consider it if the abilities and resources are there.
No, absolutely. And you know what? I feel as though that's not a bad idea. When I was in San Francisco for the conference, one of the things I noticed was they had a plethora of signs that they put up on the light poles. And when you're walking, you just, you do notice the different signs and the difference, a lot of them were fun, a lot of them were goofy, a lot of them didn't mean anything, but you notice them, you notice them all as you're going for your walks. So I feel like that we do have the opportunity to promote ourselves a little bit more. And I do think that there have been at least designs we've made for, like, QR codes that link back to the Pirate Party platform or website. And it'll usually be like a one word or one sentence that kind of summarizes one of our beliefs. Like I think one of them was like, keep water clean, another one was be a good neighbor, one was, you know, if purchasing is an ownership, piracy isn't theft, things like that. I think those are solid things to look towards and build towards. I have no objections towards that. Obviously, as we move forward, just anything we could do to promote the party and more specifically, because it's not just promoting the party, we want to get Pirates into office. We want to make sure that not only, it's not just people know the party, it's people trust the party to govern. So we are we can't govern unless we're known. So I can't help but agree. So Blaze, go ahead.
Yeah, just speaking of office candidates, I don't most, the easiest thing I can report right now, the most, the best update I can give right now is I set up a website for my campaign. So yeah, it's ready and all that. So yeah.
Fantastic. If you wanted to share the website on the Discord, I can make sure, once, or whenever you're ready, I suppose.
I can do that, but I have to go to work in like 14 minutes. So I'll do that one again.
No problem. Take your time. That's exciting news. Thank you for letting us know. Otherwise, if we've got nothing else for old business, I do want to hand the floor over to Timothy. Just, Tim, this is your time to speak on your campaign. For, just for myself to give an intro, I don't think I could really give more than Timothy is an independent candidate from Ohio running for governor. A former Chair of the Ohio Forward Party, if I'm not mistaken, that is indeed your former position. And this is actually your second campaign. You ran a writing campaign the first time, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
Yeah, a very different sort of campaign, but yes, I did run as a writing candidate for governor.
Well, I feel confident in saying two-time candidate for Governor Timothy Grady joins us today. So without further ado, I will turn the floor over to you and just say as you please, I asked the fellow Pirates to at least wait until he opens himself up to questions before we start asking, because the floor is yours.
All right, thank you. Thank you so much for having me. I've known of the Pirate Party since at least probably 2010 or 11. Big fan, generally of a better approach to copyright laws. That's mostly what I have always known you guys as, but you guys have really developed politically. And I like the direction you're going in. Hi, I'm Tim Grady. I'm the independent candidate for Governor of Ohio 2026. I launched my campaign in late June. I couldn't be happier with how things have gone, actually much better than I initially expected. I thought I'd spend a few months just screaming content into the void, hoping to get a little traction. But no, I got news stories, got volunteers, got donors, things are progressing smoothly. I'm honestly way better at answering questions, but I will try and give a little pitch first. My campaign has three core guiding principles. These are the things that, you know, shape my policy, shape how I would govern and shape the campaign itself. So I'm not going to go into every policy issue, but the three core principles are integrity, freedom, and improvement. Integrity is first and foremost, my commitment to fight corruption in Ohio. Ohio is actually one of the most corrupt states in the Union. We had the largest bribery scandal in our history, not four years ago, when $60 million in bribes, probably more, were paid to state government officials to give a $1 billion bailout to First Energy, a company that probably didn't even need it. So I think nothing really gets better until we start dealing with corruption. I think it's theft from taxpayers and it's happening at all levels and in all parties in Ohio. It's truly institutionalized and that comes from a lack of accountability, from a lack of competition. No one in Ohio is going to lose their seat, no matter their complicity in this bribery scandal. Actually, the guy who was arrested, our House Speaker, he was arrested, he was on trial, he was reelected to the office, mostly because no one had filed a run against him until it was too late for anyone but writing candidates. But that's the fact that voters can't hold our elected officials accountable is what makes them just not care that they are being criminals and are getting caught. They don't care because there's no punishment. We need, the only way I create accountability is through political competition. That's truly what I believe. And integrity also means transparency and good government and commitment to public service from myself and anyone who I would appoint to my administration and anyone who joins my campaign. Freedom is, you know, our country is founded on this idea of individual liberties, on freedom and the idea that a free people can best govern themselves. I stand by that. I stand by those founding principles and I want to guarantee everyone's fundamental human rights and dignity. But to another extent, I believe freedom requires opportunity. Because I don't think you're truly free if your life is determined by the circumstances of your birth. So we have to create a state that offers people opportunity and mobility to improve themselves, to better their position, find greater prosperity and become better people. And that leads into the third core principle, which is integrity. Integrity has a long, or sorry, improvement, you know, two I's. Improvement has a long American tradition. Our the national Republicans, like John Quincy Adams and Henry Clay, believe strongly in this concept of improvement. And it was both national improvement and self-improvement, because that is the responsibility of a free people to improve themselves and to improve the world around them. So I'm very committed to, one, creating as governor, the tools that allow people to improve themselves. Investments in our education, investments in skills, but also making investments in the state infrastructure, things that connect us, places where we live. Just preserving our state and our natural environment as well. And for self-improvement, I believe we should lead by example, but also I believe in the power of campaigns to change people's minds and inspire people. So what I hope to accomplish with this campaign, aside from being elected, is to convince people to set out to improve themselves, improve their community and improve the state, because I don't think the government is all that powerful. It can't really change the world, no matter if we have the best funded and the best managed government, which under no circumstances is that the case. It still is not going to solve all our problems. The only way we're going to do that is if we all, as a society, commit to those things and try and aspire to be more. So those are the three core principles. I am I guess I should also give a little background about myself. I've been involved in third-party and independent politics for over a decade. I was a candidate for State House for the Libertarians in 2018. I did not actually join the Libertarian Party. I was just trying to help them fill seats. That was originally when I was going to run for governor the first time as a joke, which I'll get into later. But I've worked with the Libertarians, I've supported the Greens, I've followed the transhumanists a lot. And vaguely like a libertarian centrist, so I think we need a political party from the center. I supported Centrist Project, which became Unite America for a while. I think it was badly run. I think it was run by the political professional class who had no idea how to build a new grassroots movement. And all of those people, after Unite America failed, moved over to take on leadership roles and forward. So I joined forward with some skepticism in 2023, like January 2023. But thought, you know, it was the party that it had the best shot at making this happen. They had the resources and they had some publicity and they had some noteworthy people. And I met the people in the Ohio Forward Party, there were quite a few of them. Like when I joined, over 100 volunteers had signed up just in Ohio, like active volunteers, ready to do things. And our national state leadership just killed it, just, just killed all of our momentum. And the Forward Party it's been a long three years with them. But after a long, complicated internal struggle, I was eventually elected Chair of the Ohio Forward Party in November or October 2023, led it for about 15 months. We supported some candidates, had some local elected officials affiliate with us. We continued to push out content, grow support, developed a platform, had a convention, all those things. And then I, things, I did, I lost faith in our national leadership and thought I haven't given up on the Forward Party, but I did decide I could do more for the general cause of bringing a new party to Ohio and the country outside the system. In more on politics, in 2022, I did run for governor as a writing candidate, as the Dark Horse, which was meant to be a real-life supervillain sort of concept. It was a mixture of straight up trying to offer villainous proposals and absurd theater, while also being the most serious candidate with the most well-developed policies anyone has ever seen. I am happy that as a writing candidate, I received 570-something write-in votes. It's very nice that that made people learned my name. I've actually never met a single one. I've never in the wild who said, yeah. But in that, I was endorsed by Vermin Supreme in 2022 with the specific qualifier that he thought I was a horse. You know, I was calling myself the Dark Horse, he thought I was a horse. So it's not, it doesn't necessarily, it wasn't necessarily a sincere endorsement of me, Tim, personally. It was the Dark Horse, the concept, which, you know, anyone can be the Dark Horse, anyone could replace me. This time, through my work with the Forward Party and just greater disenchantment with our political system, I've come to the conclusion I have to do this for real, because no one else is going to. I have to actually go build a unifying political movement that can move Ohio and the country forward and try and bring new ideas and a real alternative to Democrat and Republican endless repudiations and infighting. So this is the first election I've ever tried to win, and I'm very confident that it can be successful. If this is the political moment to make that happen. And dissatisfaction with the Democrats and Republicans is at all-time highs in Ohio, that they are running just the most mediocre of candidates, unfortunately, for governor. They are badly-run parties, they are corrupt parties, they're the weakest they've ever been. And it's our responsibility to defeat them and try and bring something better. Additional background, because I skipped over it. I'm from Mansfield, Richland County, Ohio area. I'm a lifelong, Ohioan, lifelong independent. I have an associate's in computer science, a bachelor's in economics. I'm currently a master's of public administration student at OSU Glenn College of Public Administration. And I think that's probably all I have to say. I am happy to answer all questions forever. So like, no matter what, if you want really aggressive, incisive questions, I'm all for it. I'm here for that. Oh, and I guess I am asking for your guys' endorsement. I want to say that. I am seeking the endorsement of the Pirate Party. That's why I'm here today, not just to pitch you on my campaign, but to pitch you on endorsement. I, I don't know, Jolly Mitch, do you want to handle?
Absolutely, yeah. Thank you so much, Tim. I appreciate that. And it's a fantastic spiel, fantastic elevator pitch. So I'm looking forward to see how the questions go. And, you know, so far, I'll admit, I like what I heard so far. So good, so far, so good. Rowan, you were the first hand-up, so we'll start with your question.
Thank you for being here today, Tim. So I just wanted to ask, based on the narrative, the observation of the two main parties being weak in Ohio, what tactics do you intend to use to break both their narratives? Because they're both going to present narratives, even though they're going to be very mediocre. They're still going to try to pitch this Democratic vision, this Republican vision. How are you getting to those people who usually might choose one of those visions, rather than actually find a new vision that's neither of those?
Yes, okay. So I love the use of the word narrative. I believe strongly in building narratives. If you ever go back onto my Dark Horse website, it's got all sorts of crazy stuff about basically culture-jamming narratives. Yeah, so I've worked, I volunteered as a campaign manager on numerous campaigns. I've run my own campaigns. What I, I suppose pride myself on is having the highest impact for the least resources. Honestly, what the Democrat versus Republican duopoly, I don't like that word, but duopoly creates is it's an uncompetitive political market. And in uncompetitive markets, you don't see innovation. They have never actually had to really innovate, never had to fight for their survival against something. Hi, am I in here twice now?
Yeah, I'm seeing double, four Tims.
I don't know what to do about that.
Ignore it. I'm sure it'll fix itself. You can just, I would just continue.
Okay. So it's possible, no one has thought more about how to do this, like how to not just elect an independent in Ohio, but more broadly create a new political movement in Ohio from the center. It's possible no one has thought more about that than me, in that I've been trying to figure this out for over a decade. Because I think our biggest problem in this country is Democrat versus Republican, the tribalism, the sectarian. So I keep losing.
Oh, no. Well, clearly, the powers that be do not want Mr. Timothy Grady to have a successful campaign for Governor of Ohio.
The crooked internet companies are silencing independent voices.
Yeah, this is, this is bullshit. So I mean.
What is going on here? They're not gonna hear the truth?
No, yeah, I have no idea. There's two Timothy Gradies, but neither of them are, now there's three.
A third, Chris, the room.
I don't know why this keeps happening. If it happens again, I'm switching.
They don't want us to hear the truth.
Yeah, they're conspiring against you.
Very strange. Okay, hopefully, I restarted my browser, so hopefully everything works better. Yeah. Basically, I believe what I have to do to win is essentially, number one, I have to be better than them on basically everything. I have to have better ideas, I have to work harder to market them, I have to really try and be more interesting, be more innovative and really just commit my whole time. But this is the environment in which it can happen. Again, people are extremely dissatisfied. The Ohio Democratic Party is basically a defunct party. It pretends to be opposition, but it is not. The Republican Party as a single-party state, where all the power is within a single party. It's doing what it inevitably does in a single-party system, and it is fracturing due to its own infighting. So both are weak and divided right now. I do hope to capitalize off of that and also just the desire for anyone but them. I mean, that is my initial opening, that people will take anyone but them. But I want to then grow on that by having better, more well-developed policies.
This is crazy. I gotta say one thing, though, quickly to Tim's point about a single-party state being able to fracture different tribes, because I think there's a historical point to this, or parties. The Eastern German government, they had like the main party, whether it was socialist, whatever the name was. But they'd have different parties within their assembly to make it look like they had multiple parties, but it was still one party. Interesting history, no, but anyways.
We're gonna see if my phone works now. Okay. All right, so the initial breaking in is I'm an independent. That is a good selling point. People are eager for a new choice in politics and I am legitimately an independent. I have lots of independent outside bona fides. I am not someone who just switched my party designation, you know, two years ago. And I'm just running away from a party to run independent in name only. But I really want to bring a better approach to policymaking, using ideas drawing from this is something I'm not supposed to talk about because it's too arcane, but my background is economics, my passion is economics. This is why I'm in politics, to make, to advance. to advance new economic ideas. The economic school of thought I draw on is called complexity economics. It draws on the complexity sciences, which are really the cutting edge of our sciences. It's a multidisciplinary scientific approach. I really should not be talking about this because it's so absurd. But basically, you know, economics, neoclassical economics, neoliberalism, to me, that is dead and discredited with the 2008 financial crisis. And it it viewed the economy more as a static physics equation, static equilibrium. And complexity economics acknowledges that we are our society and economy is a evolutionary, dynamic, complex ecosystem. That's all. So bringing a totally new type of politics to buttress a new political party, I think is key. That is what you need to break through. I think Reaganism was bringing neoliberalism as a new economic approach. If you like that or not, that's what it was. It was a reaction to stagflation in the seventies. Before that, you know, it was New Deal Keynesianism as a reaction to the Great Depression. All of our political chaos of the last decade is a result of the 2008 financial crisis. I understand that. I'd say neoliberal establishment politicians don't, and that's why they are losing to more radical extremes like the left, or I don't really have a derogatory name for the left, leftism. And Trumpism, Magaism. And so I'm offering new ideas from what I hope becomes the political center. And complexity leans towards, you know, more decentralization. It leans towards pluralism. And and I I hope the process of this campaign is figuring out how to market new succinct ideas, so I don't have to say the word complexity all the time, which just makes people think, okay. What is this crazy person talking about? So I think new ideas can really help break through. There is a point that we need to hit of sort of takeoff of viability. Right now, I have to collect 5,000 signatures to be on the ballot. Once I am able to announce those 5,000 signatures, that's kind of one of those takeoff points for the campaign. It's where the press has to then take me seriously. It's where my political opponents have to start worrying about me, though they will not start talking about me. And hopefully, we can grow a lot from there. At some point, we get to flip all of the logic that Democrats and Republicans use to keep independents and minor parties out against them. Very quickly, I will become the lesser of two evils for both sides. And certainly for the Democrats who consistently lose by about thirty points, I I will be able to say I am the lesser evil to Vivek. So you have to vote for me. Sorry. It's just how it has to be. And I will be able to do that with the Republicans at a certain point. Especially as I take away a lot of Republican opponent's support from, well, being a more reasonable. The Republican is probably Vivek. He tried to run for president in 2024 as a Republican and tried to out-Trump Trump. Not extremely well-liked. So I I do believe I can take a great deal of his support. But also activate more, more than forty-eight percent, about four million voters, registered voters in Ohio didn't vote in the last gubernatorial election. I hope to really activate a good portion of them. I'd say my math is I need, based on 2022 numbers, all else equal, I need to get twenty-five percent of the number of people who vote for the Republican, twenty-five percent of the number of people who vote for the Democrat, and twenty-five percent of the people who didn't vote to come out and vote for me. And all else equal, that would give me a pretty solid victory, five percent margin. I'd be about thirty-seven percent. And that, that's the, that's the possible thing in a three-way race. No one even needs to break forty. At, yeah, and I can campaign and I intend to campaign without really ever going after the Democrat or the Republican because I'm focused on my unique positive vision for Ohio. I know what Ohio can be. I believe it has great potential. And the Democrats and the Republicans can spend all their time fighting each other. And every time they attack each other, it's you know, negative partisanship works when there are only two options. But when there is something else, it's really just all their attacks drive more people towards me. And if they decide to start attacking me, they are just legitimizing me. They are getting my name out there. They are building my support. So there's a certain point we have to reach. A viability, but once we reach that, we really can start. Honestly, we had takeoff. We, all of the strategies can turn against them because they have never had to compete like this before. Getting to that point is the hard thing, but again, the ground has never been more fertile. And I believe I have the best ideas. I know how to market this well. And we are steadily growing support. And I'm just gonna keep working harder and harder until we make that happen. We have a solid fifteen months. We started very early. So yes, that is my fifteen-minute answer with a lot of breaks to that question.
Right on. Thank you for that answer. I appreciate it. And believe you me, take more time than not enough time. That's, that's that we appreciate you. Now Blaze had to leave, but he did leave his question with me, so I'm gonna relay that to you now. Blaze asks, how are you aligned in terms of internet freedom and privacy, which is a big thing for the US Pirate Parties? So I think that's more than fair to, more than fair question.
Yeah. So as I said, I have basically libertarian tendencies in terms of both defense of fundamental individual liberties of those that includes the right to privacy, which is inherent, even if it's not listed in our Bill of Rights, that is an inherent right, and it is found among our, within our constitution. But also just inherent human rights. The, I I do think no, I forgot the question. Basically, I believe the internet has been underutilized in our society and has not been well-served. It has been increasingly centralized, and I am deeply concerned about the crapification of the internet by all sorts of bad actors. I I think the base good of the internet comes from people who commit their personal time and are not paid for it. So I'd like to support that in better ways. Repeat the question.
The Blaze just wanted to know your stance on internet freedoms and privacy.
Yeah, I think you have a right to your data. I think you have a right to privacy, and I think you have also the right to have companies erase that data that they've collected on you. I would like to see new ways of building internet architecture to make it less dependent on profiting off of the user's content that they create, I suppose.
Right on. Thank you. Uh, now Rowan's AFK, so when he gets back, I know he had a question, raised his hand for, but Wanda, I will get to your question in just a moment. I just wanted to ask a quick question myself. You were not only seeking our endorsement, but it is my understanding you will, at a later date, not too far from the future, be seeking the endorsement of the US Transhumanist Party as well. Now, if you've been keeping up, or if you're aware of it, the US Pirate Party and the US Transhumanist Party are currently entering in a coalition together. All hands for a free future. And with the plans for that coalition is we plan on still maintaining our identities as the Pirate Party and the Transhumanist Party. But we will look towards cross endorsing each other's candidates. Eventually, we'll be looking at a joint presidential candidate, but that is a few years down the line. But ultimately, there is further collaboration between our two parties is what this is ultimately leading to. So I suppose my question is, why specifically were you searching for the endorsements of the Pirate and Transhumanist Parties to begin with? And what do you hope to have with the All Hands Coalition once it's all said and done?
Yeah, well, I'm seeking endorsements to obviously improve my political coalition for victory. But I am a fan of I'm a fan of political choice. I've been building and trying to encourage people to run for office pretty much my entire life, trying to get more people to run. I think we need choices. I think democracy is about selecting the best choices or the best policies in a competitive system. And you need to give people lots of good choices. Choice is freedom. Better choices and more choices is more freedom. I I align with the Pirate Party in their well, mostly their defensive or not defensive, their approach to the need for, let's say, a knowledge commons and a more enlightened approach to intellectual property rights. I don't, I'm probably not a copyright abolitionist because give people a few years of patents and copyright. But the system we have now is pretty crazy, and I I do believe that inherently ideas are not the product of one person, you know, twenty-two people invented a working incandescent light bulb before Obama's Edison did. I mean, the, the list of simultaneous discoveries, which I think you can find a Wikipedia list of that, is so numerous and so coincidental that it's tough to conclude that, okay, human progress is the product of complex interactions across an entire you know, human society. It's not one person's genius. It's always advancement. I I very interested, as you might be able to tell, in the history of scientific innovation and trying to understand how we innovate. Because I I do think innovation is the only way you increase prosperity in a society. So trying to figure out how to innovate is my top priority. Mostly, I've stumbled on invest more in education. But so the Pirate Party's commitment to freedom, commitment to privacy, and commitment to a more enlightened approach to intellectual property and understanding that the the world that we collectively create is, must, you know, be open and free for us to prosper. And I I think acknowledging that is important. And I I don't want to start getting way too into things. But knowledge commons is what we should, we should really care about that a lot more. Ideas have basically infinite positive externalities. Like, you you can't capture all of the profit from a new idea. It will spread. And so it is the only thing that you know, if you're looking for a market inefficiency excuse for government action, which I don't think you need, but if you're looking for one, basically, investment in creating ideas, investment in research, eh, is there is no upper cap on how much you should spend on that. With both the Pirates and the Transhumanists, I notice you guys both have basically this commitment to individual liberties, commitment to, I, kind of free exchange, not, and free, you know, provisions of labor. And I do like the Pirate Party's shift towards Pan-Americanism. I'm a globalist. I'm all, that's also something people tell me I'm never allowed to say. I'm a globalist. I say it anyways. I don't care. People should know that I want world peace and I I want universal protection of human rights, no matter what country you live in. I don't see why that should be controversial. So I like that about the Pirates and I like the Transhumanist Party. Well, one, I've always had a fascination with biological immortality, like why can't we achieve that? But I'm not personally a transhumanist in that you know, I I still have qualms about a lot of stuff. And one of the most difficult things for me mentally, morally, over the last four years is coming to terms with this idea that I shouldn't be any less happy with artificial intelligence continuing on our society than I am humanity as today. They are still our you know, they are our children. They are the inheritors of our society. I shouldn't be uncomfortable with that. I'm a little uncomfortable with the idea of like, you know, humanity being replaced, but you know, that's just how I am. I like the Transhumanist Party because they understand the importance of science and technology to making everyone's lives better. And I strongly agree with them in basically, they, they are tackling and trying to reason with morally and politically issues that are in the future, but also very much affecting us today, genetic engineering, artificial intelligence. All of these things are taking off and are going to have crazy unintended effects. And for the most part, our political parties and our politicians don't really try and handle them. They engage them only at a surface level, and they often do a bad job. So I really appreciate a party that is committed to actually understanding technology and trying to use it well and invest in it. Yeah, so basically, I agree with the Transhumanists and Pirate Parties in their approaches to liberty. And I appreciate what they do in other respects. And I believe in political choice and I believe in our democracy as a system by which we decide how to live and govern ourselves. So I want to support those as much as possible.
Thank you. And I will say that a lot of the things that you're saying you saw and were attracted to in the Pirate Party and the Transhumanist Party is a lot of the reasons that we were forming this coalition to begin with, a lot of these shared values that we do hold. So the fact that these are some of the things that attracted you to both of our parties, I would say is a good sign for our coalition in the future. I will kick it over to Wanda and then Rowan, once the Wanda's question is answered. If you still had your question from earlier, you can ask it. But otherwise, Wanda, you're up, you're up to bat.
Um, yeah, I wanted to ask, what is your take on the recent?
Um, yeah, I wanted to ask, what is your take on um, the recent push for ID verification on social media websites?
I haven't seen that too much. Is that in America or?
Um, this is, this has been happening in Europe and Australia and uh YouTube in particular is um expected to roll out um up s- some kind of protocol like that's at some point this month in the US.
Yeah, I suppose the question is really just how do you feel about uh having to upload your ID to use the internet or any part of the internet?
Uh, absolutely opposed to any sort of requirements there. I do think there's a market for a social media or something network that would like have identity verification as an option. Don't, but again, that's more of a for the free market to decide sort of thing. Um, basically, I respect the internet as a place where we build in the digital world, a more free world with fewer restrictions than we have here. You don't, you know, really need an ID to access information in the, in the physical world, so. Like I don't show my ID when I buy a book, so that's yeah, for now. I guess I'd need one to get a library card. Uh, typically, which I don't know why that is, but I would resist concentrations of power and throwing up gates to knowledge and the free movement of information. Uh, like, I I understand people have concerns about like who's accessing what, I think mostly with children. But like, I think you have a responsibility. Uh, if you're worried about that, you have a responsibility as a parent to manage your children. That's not okay now. Everyone else in the world to use IDs to get on things. And it's also the case, I think people are, are especially like children would still get around it. It's not like they're not gonna know how to use their parents' IDs, so you're putting up these barriers and creating this tracking for really nothing. The actual like effectiveness of any policy should be considered beyond just good intentions as well. Like a lot of what we do has in government, they they have, they have just such lovely intentions for protecting children or protecting the public or something and here's the thing, it usually doesn't achieve much. It creates inconveniences. It creates sometimes it creates just the worst incentives to do other things, create other behavior. Yeah, we know, for instance, when you make things illegal, what you tend to create is worse black markets, like underground. You wanna push things further into the darkness where worse things will start generating. Keep the internet open, keep it free. Um, and again, I really do think this is now me getting off that question, but I do think social media accounts or companies, especially in a federated system may want to try some identity verification offering, like just pay five dollars or something. I think there's a market for that because the internet is being made, you know, is the crapification of the internet and perhaps the dead internet theory. It's things are getting worse, guys. Have you noticed this? Like, the content I'm fed is just slop. But and and so what was good about the internet before is what people were freely making. Now now it's slowing, going away, but stuff hasn't changed so much that we can't still make the old internet. It's, some of it's just kind of you know, what I said about personal improvements and per- what the government can't do things, but people can. I feel like we can make the internet better again. Can we, can we do that? Is that a good goal for a political movement? Just make the internet better? Just through through your own actions and maybe see what what the government's role in that is, but yeah. I I hope that answered your question to an extent. I I I think it's not a good idea to require identification to access the internet.
I, fantastic. And and you know what? I will say I was on the path to hell the other day and it was paid with nothing but good intentions. So I understand from I understand that completely. Drew, if you could, uh, I think it's about time to reset the stream really quick. If we can get a stream reset and then and we're back. Rowan, take it away.
I wasn't prepared for that, honestly. Uh, I actually had to rethink my question. Sorry, I was locked in to what you're saying, Tim, so I was, I kinda lost my question in the midst of that. Um, oh yeah, um, well, cause you already addressed kinda like the connections to pirate values. That's what I was originally gonna ask, but then that kinda got answered. Um, but actually, I might need a timeout. I gotta think of, I gotta think of a question again, because the question I had now has already kinda been answered.
Alright, thank you, Rowan. And while you think of that question, I guess I'll just throw a quick inquiry. Uh, you know, we talked about the Pirate and Transhumanist Coalition. However, I do believe that should you win the office of Governor of Ohio, the coalition against you would be the corruption coalition of the Democrats and Republicans working hard to undermine you. Uh, and I just wanted to know how you are ready to approach that, not having any allies in state in the State House or Senate.
Yeah, so I I think about this a lot, the circumstances under which I am elected. There are a lot of different scenarios. There are more optimistic scenarios I want to try and uh, fight for, uh, obviously, um, but uh, I'm prepared to govern under any situation. Uh, what I would like to do is as this campaign develops is hopefully I can recruit some other independent candidates for a few key statewide offices at least, like um, in Ohio, we elect our auditor, attorney general, secretary of state and treasurer. I think all of those it would be important to form a solid ticket of independence for that. Uh, he is like anti-corruption is one of my top things and I can't really do much if I do not have the state auditor, the attorney general, the secretary of state, all on the same page with me on, we have to, you know, we have to go through our books. We have to get really aggressive about how campaign finance is happening, about how businesses are spending their money and we have to get ready to prosecute people, I think. P- there are a lot of people I think that are gonna, should be prosecuted and probably see jail time for what I I think is absurd levels of corruption in the state. I I think a lot of stuff is for sale. I like just um, few months ago in the Ohio budget, we gave six hundred million dollars to build a new football stadium. Why was that in the state budget? They they are looting our Ohio unclaimed funds um, for that. It's and 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 the the owners of the Browns, they they, you know, they made a ton of political donations. Uh, that's obviously not criminal enough to prosecute because our system basically allows that sort of legalized corruption, but you know, it's stuff you can aggressively investigate and try and expose. And I do think there's actually a lot of criminal activity going on. Um, I I I before worked as an anti-money laundering analyst, which I kinda got into because of politics and then I learned a lot of good techniques. Well, something I'd like to do in this campaign when I just have enough research assistance is I wanna comb through all of our, you know, Ohio campaign finance reports because there's a lot of information in there. Like, uh, there there were candidates when the bribery scandal was exposed who were taking money from the corrupt scheme and then they were paying money to what were exposed to be as shell companies for laundering the money. And I'm I'm to believe that these candidates had no idea that they were paying for services from their campaign accounts to a shell company. I'm not so sure about that. And I I've looked okay, I'm going off on tangent, but I've looked through like Ohio campaign finance reports before and I see, you know, the the money travels back and forth between candidates. They all donate to each other. They donate to county and then state party and then that money, eventually I've seen it kinda get bundled and then exit through like um, just a consulting firm, like, oh, here's a million dollar payment from the Ohio Republican Party to a consulting firm that has no clear like physical presence that is headed by the governor's former uh PAC fundraiser head. Okay, that's weird. I, but I guess I guess that's legal because if you say you paid for consulting uh in your campaign finance report, who's to say what the value of consulting is? Um, beyond just getting some independents elected to my office, to offices with me statewide, I do want to start looking at what it would take to build a new political party in Ohio. Uh, I obviously, that's what I was doing with the Forward Party. I was extremely focused on hey, we should, none of this happens until we're an actual political party. We need to just do the hard work of collecting some signatures and getting on the ballot. Um, National wasn't too enthusiastic about that. I think it's one of the reasons, pretty frustrated, but it's not incredibly difficult to form a minor party in Ohio. You need one percent signatures of people who voted in the last election. Right now, that's fifty-seven thousand. Um, by July, that's a potential path I would like to go down. Um, if this campaign builds enough steam in the next five months, I would like to pursue minor party status. And once you have that, you can actually put just hundreds of people on the ballot really quickly. Um, and that would be I I I believe once you form a new party, you should go big. You should go for all of it. You don't just a- avoid challenging races or you know, play races where you won't be a spoiler. No, you should run for everything. You should try and win because that's what people vote for, people who try and win. Not just people who send a message. I have nothing against sending a message. I'm a big believer in campaigns as tools of social uh change uh and winning hearts and minds. But I also wanna win votes and get a new government in Ohio. This is the time to do that. Um, I do think if I am elected uh governor alone as an independent, I, you know, that will be very shocking to our political system. I I would like to hope that there are enough politicians in our state legislature who see that the winds are changing, that maybe they would jump ship or at least get really scared about openly going to war with me, uh, if I were governor and maybe help pass some meaningful legislation, even if it's not everything I want and even if it's, you know, a little bit what they want, I think at some point, voters may demand results and they may feel that pressure. And if they don't, if I am governor, I am absolutely in a great position to build to collect what will probably be like forty-five thousand signatures for twenty-twenty-eight, get minor party status and then sweep in my party into office in twenty-twenty-eight. So that that'll be my plan, basically have that threat looming over everyone if we don't have the power to make it reality in twenty-twenty-six, the threat of what twenty-twenty-eight will bring. Um, as governor, probably my biggest power is in appointments. Um, there are a lot of boards, committees, um, commissions that I get to appoint people to and I believe strongly in trying to appoint people who share my vision of, you know, integrity and honest government and also investment. Um, there's a lot of funds that frankly, the governor's office indirectly directs and I'd like to in have us direct that money to tangible improvements, especially in our research and development ecosystem. But I I also like to say, you know, the fish rots from the head. I think our bureaucracy could use some updating and I will lead by example in integrity and also pure dedication in public service. Yeah.
Thank you. Rowan, go ahead.
Okay, I actually have a question now, sorry. Um, but I remember like to connect to a point previously touched on. We talked about decentralization to a certain extent of like, you know, how, I mean, I think this applies to state government as well. And you being, if you if you were to win, uh, you'd be in the position of governor. How in that office would you work to decentralize the central state government and give powers back to the different uh local governments and um counties? Or counties and towns, you know, the local
Yeah.
bodies.
Localities, municipalities, localities. Yeah, um. Well, one of the things I like to do as governor is I believe my role in economic development especially is to work with these people. So I our funding system in Ohio for a lot of things is pretty screwed. Um, especially like education. It's actually too decentralized in education, but um, for localities, they, and our our education system lies essentially on property taxes, which is driving crazy right now. Um, like they they are literally people trying to get an amendment in the Ohio constitution to abolish property taxes, which um, I mean, I like land value tax over property tax, but I also like they didn't have a plan to replace all of our education funding. Um, part of decentralization, uh, I I view, you know, more federal governments or the state central government, one of its better roles, and this draws on complexity thinking is basically a centralizer of collection of taxation and data and disperser of that stuff and then leaving the localities or lower level governments to make the decisions on how to use that. Basically, the state government kinda collects and disperses the money and it sets some goals, broad goals and benchmarks. And then it looks to see how s- localities are actually hitting those. Um, I believe in an experimental approach to policy, so that means you you try policies at the local level and multiple different policies and you see what works, what doesn't, and you scale up what works. So our government in Ohio gets really pushy, um, when the city governments try and push back against whatever they're doing. Uh, part of that is just because our state government is usually entirely Republican and some of our larger cities are very Democrat, both incredibly corrupt because they aren't accountable, but they get into fights and the state government tries to take away all of their rights to do things. I think cities and localities are very important for you know, innovation and and I I think that's where a lot of people live. And so they need to have the freedoms to address the issues that they are aware of. Basically, decision-making should be pushed to the lowest practical level because people who are closer to a problem better know what the problem is to begin with and how to face it. And what the state government should do is provide support and empower these people to do that. Um, a bit tangentially, but more broadly to my main campaign themes. I'm from a small Rust Belt city, Mansfield. I live outside of Mansfield. I'm in whatever exurban, upper middle class. But I, you know, our county and Mansfield in two thousand eight financial crisis it caused our local GM plant to close. That went out of business that took a thousand or more jobs with it. It was a very hard hit a- after a almost half a century of hard hits. Ohio is one of the most urbanized states in the Union. People don't think of it as such, but we have, instead of having like one or two huge cities like New York or Illinois or California, yes, shout out there. Um, we, we, we have a lot of small, medium sized cities. And these are overlooked. They're overlooked in government. They're overlooked in even an academic research perspective. Honestly, before the industrial revolution, medium sized cities didn't exist. They, like, all of these cities are literally a creation of big factories and rail networks. And those things are gone now. So these cities struggle to survive. We need a better approach to these cities. And I, I, I think the twenty first century, um, offers, oh, we can build a twenty first century economy. A lot of advancements in technology have happened that we haven't incorporated or addressed. Like additive manufacturing, three D printing, uh, or, you know, on demand services and production. These are things that are possible now. You can, instead of building really big factories, which everyone from our president uh, on down is obsessed with, they like building really big things, we can actually have small decentralized industry a- and try and capitalize on the individual strengths and weaknesses of all of these cities. And then you connect them, you know, through a- as nodes in a larger network through transportation and, and through communications networks, like just good internet basically. Um, but, and so you can revitalize all of these cities at once by making them better connected, sharing ideas, sharing resources better. I believe in a decentralized economy that will complement a decentralized government. Mostly what has to happen is a lot of these cities, um, need to wake up and, well, not just cities, but politicians, local governments, they need to wake up and they need to realize that they have to start working together to make a better future, not competing against each other by, you know, race to the bottom handouts for big corporations to build a big plant somewhere. No, you want a robust economy. You want lots of small businesses so that, you know, when one industry, one company turns, takes a downward hit, you don't destroy the entire town. I think that's, a lot of our politicians are backwards thinking. Uh, Sherrod Brown was Ohio senator for a long time. He, he's very protectionist. He's very big industry. He hates the term Rust Belt. I don't hate the term Rust Belt because I grew up in the Rust Belt. I think it creates a unique culture and history that we should embrace, but they are obsessed with building big factories and having big employers and giving big handouts. It was yeah, big news in Ohio when GM shut down the plant in Lordstown outside of Youngstown. And politician after politician, Donald Trump, our senators, they made these promises uh, that they're bringing new company to replace it. It never happened and it was never really a viable plan to begin with. That's my biggest problem with today's politicians. They don't know how to deliver prosperity. They don't understand how the new economy works. They are desperate to go back to the past and it, it just won't work. So we need people who are aware of the real world, aware of what the future holds and are willing to make investments in different ideas and a different kind of economy and approach to governance. Especially decentralized and experimental, willing to say you're wrong, willing to make adjustments and really willing to empower, you know, say, are the actual implementers of policy, the lower level bureaucrats, the frontline workers who actually see how it's being done. A lot of our policy is written in a way that creates stringent restrictions on people. And there are a lot of, oh, there's books on this coming out nowadays. I think like one is Recoding America or something. It talks about how basically America's procurement system is totally screwed up because I don't know, we're afraid of the government doing anything. So we contract everything out, but we're also afraid of contractors making any decisions on their own. So we give them step by step requirement guides and it's a disaster. One thing, you just have to trust people. I trust people. And yeah, make sure that, well, trust but bear. I trust people. I want to trust people. I think our entire nation, our economy, the internet, it depends to a certain extent on trust and trust is what's been eroded. Partisanship drives a decline in trust. We say that person is other. That person is against us. There is a conspiracy against us. I want to fight a- against this thinking. I want to try and get us to care about each other and to trust each other and understand that people disagree, but we're all trying to get to the same place. We're all want people to live better. We want people to have good, happy, healthy lives. And we want people's communities to succeed. Yeah, I went off on some tangents, but there's my answer.
Uh, thank you. Rowan, is this follow up question?
Oh, follow up question, but I realize we also are streaming on YouTube and there's comments. I, I don't know if I should have mentioned that.
No, I, there, there's plenty of comments, Tim. You're very, you're very.
Very popular.
Two, two individuals, a, a Yanni and a Chickenzilla. So if you know either of those guys, they're, they want to bear your children, apparently is the, the comment I saw.
This is, this is. Tim, you're cute. Let me buy you a drink. That's a.
The, my favorite was, Tim, the union is not a degenerated worker state because I don't know what that means, but you know, I, I appreciate that you have people that come in and vocalize behind you. I, I, even whether it's good or bad, I suppose that, that, that means something.
Now, the YouTube commenters want to know, um, if you've read Marx.
No, I've honestly struggled to make my way through just Adam Smith, who I frankly give more credence to. Anyways, look, sorry, I am, economics is my passion and I do care about economic history and I'm getting around to reading, you know, economic history. Currently I'm reading, um, Socialism, Capitalism and Democracy by Joseph Schumpeter, Schumpeter guy, uh, came up with the term um, creative destruction, which I care a lot about, but I, I will say, I believe in, when we're getting into economics, I advocate the complexity school of economic thought. It is a step change. It is an evolution beyond the neoclassical framework, which everything from neoliberalism to Marxism relies on. So I, I, I bunch you all together on the old and I care about the new. I, I respect old economic ideas and I think it's, I don't think complexity economic theory replaces everything. It is just a new tool in the toolset and the old tools still matter. Um, theories on like, I don't know, the labor theory of value. Interesting. Uh, all of these things are interesting to me. One of the most, uh, my favorite question to ask, because I still have no real good answer is what is money? You know, if you ever want to heckle a politician, ask them what money is. They won't have a good answer, but neither do I. It's, money is, look, I'm just going to say it. Money is one of the greatest inventions in human history and has inherent value. I don't know if any of you guys are like, um, decentralized currency people, but money has inherent value as a tool for uh, facilitating exchange. It doesn't need other value. It doesn't need to be gold standard. Sorry. My local Libertarian Party that thinks gold and silver should replace our currency. It doesn't need to have separate values and it doesn't need to be backed by a government threatening taxation. People want to use money because it facilitates exchange over a vast network. I am getting onto a real weird tangent, but then we just say eight billion people on this planet, probably almost nine billion people are able to coordinate and create new things, manufacture things across the globe without speaking the same language, without ever seeing most of the other people involved. And it is done through markets and money, and it is amazing. And the beauty of decentralized self-organization. A- and I, that's what I love. Socialism or people will yell at me about the definition of that, but uh, uh, a centrally planned economy run by a few thousand of even the most highly trained bureaucrats will never outcompete an economy based on, you know, three hundred or eight billion, three hundred million or like eight billion people making decisions every day in a decentralized way. And the same is true on the other end of that spectrum in that a few thousand oligarchs making decisions, a few thousand CEOs who appoint each other to their boards is also a terrible way to run an economy because they can't do better than nine billion free and empowered people making free exchange. Free exchange is hmm, basically what we want to achieve. Free exchange is where you make a exchange where both parties are better off. That, that is the point of our, you know, working with other people and labor. We, we can do that for each other. I love it. Um, I haven't read Marx. And it's really, really far down my reading list. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Uh, I will open it up and ask, are there any more questions for Mr. Timothy Grady? I hear none. Uh, I will ask, uh, we still have quorum technically because we have half of the state parties here, but I will ask, do we want to call the vote today? Uh, and about the issue of endorsing, uh, Tim's campaign? Does anyone have any issues, conversations or motions they want to make about that? Rowan, go ahead.
Well, my first question is like, I can't see how many people are in the, um, meeting currently. Do we have quorum? I, I can't.
Currently we have Illinois, Pennsylvania, Arizona and Florida, which is half of our member states. Currently we're missing uh, Indiana, Massachusetts, California and Texas.
Okay. That's something to keep in consideration, but I mean, I, I think it's also my decision now.
It is something to keep in consideration. Or originally we had up to six member states in attendance today and we've had people whittled down as the meeting has gone on.
Yes.
Uh, so, uh, I'll, conversation's open for you guys. Uh, if anyone wants to call a motion, we could discuss how you guys want to approach it. I don't, I figured that an endorsement may come tonight, but with people dropping out the way that they have, I no longer know if that's what we want to do. So I just want to leave it open to you all. Just any motion, any discussion, what you guys want to move forward.
I, I'm open to, I'm open to, uh, making a decision tonight. I'm just saying, is anyone opposed to the idea based on the people who have had to leave? Unless you, because I, I said, if we had a quorum, and I believe you said yes, Mitch.
We do. We have half the states here that make, so that makes quorum, but it is.
Yeah.
Half our members missing.
I, I'm open to making this tonight, but I, I, I guess the bigger question is there anyone who's deeply opposed to the idea of it being made tonight?
Do we have any motions in either direction?
Either direction? Oh, that's a fair one. Uh, uh, okay. I'll, I'll, I'll bite. Motion to, uh, approve an endorsement of Tim Grady's campaign.
Are there any seconds?
All second.
Your second one? Or Drew? Who was that?
I will.
Thank you. Uh, perfect. All right. Uh, do we want, is there any discussions about the endorsement or do we just want to go straight into a vote? Uh, I will, I will call the vote then. Uh, Florida.
Um, I.
Uh, Illinois?
I.
Pennsylvania.
I.
And Arizona. Well, with the unanimous vote of all member states who are voting present, uh, Tim Grady, it sounds to me like the United States Pirate Party will support your campaign for governor of Illin- uh, Illinois, of Ohio. Uh, thank you for coming in and pitching your campaign. Anything that we could do moving forward to help you with your campaign. We do have Ohio Pirates who unfortunately, no one from Ohio could be here in attendance today. We don't have an official member state Ohio Pirate Party, but we do have an active Ohio Pirate Party for those in Ohio that are looking to volunteer. So what I anticipate is anyone who wants to be involved with the Ohio Pirates will likely have opportunities to volunteer for your campaign. I'm sure once the Transhumanist Party meeting that you have, uh, once it's finished up, I'm sure you earn their endorsement as well. I'm sure any transhumans from Ohio would be happy to help as well. Otherwise, I don't believe I have any other words. Uh, Tim, did you want to finish up with anything on the, on the endorsement? To give you words to just speak on it?
Yeah, I'd say, uh, I'm deeply honored and humbled to have your endorsement. I for you, actually, yes, you are the first of anyone to actually endorse the campaign, aside from private citizens who have some citizens or endorsements. So Pirate Party first endorsement of the Grady for Governor campaign. I really appreciate that. I think we can really make some huge differences in Ohio, uh, and hopefully then on to the whole country. Um, I absolutely want to do whatever I can to support political diversity in Ohio and I, I'd be happy to assist the development of the Pirate Party in Ohio. Um, that, that's unrelated. I would love to see what we can do to advance the cause of liberty and privacy and basically a better world and a future looking society. And I think there's going to be a lot we can do together. So I really appreciate it. And if at any point you decide to rescind your endorsement, just give me a heads up. Uh, yeah, and maybe talk things over with everyone more. Um, and if you decide you want to endorse in primaries for any reason, since I will say this election is fifteen months away. So a long time to reconsider your options, but I will absolutely take this endorsement now and hold on to it greedily. So thank you, and I hope to work together with everyone in the past. And this is the most nautical hat I have, which says, don't give up the ship. Which is, uh, a quote, well, well, it was, it's the, this is the battle flag of Oliver Hazard Perry in the Battle of Lake Erie, if, if for people very familiar with that. So this is the most nautical thing I have. I will look into more nautical things. Maybe I can get a pirate panto wearing my things. Um, and logistics question, what do you want to do with an endorsement? Because I obviously love to do press releases because I'm in politics and government and what we do is press releases. Or you can discuss that later too, if you prefer.
I, I'm sure we, we will have plenty of strategies moving forward with, within the next fifteen months. I'm sure we're going to have plenty of ideas on how to not only promote you, but, but also anything that we could do that's bilateral, uh, uh, beneficial to the both of us. I, I'm sure we'll, we'll all be happy to approach it and take it. uh, beneficial to the both of us. I'm, I'm sure we'll, we'll all be happy to approach it and take it. Uh, that all said, I think that this has been a fantastic meeting, but it's also been a meeting that's ran for ninety minutes. So I will ask any of our four voting members if there is a motion to adjourn.
We're gonna keep you forever.
It sounds like it. Honestly, guys, if that's, I mean, maybe Tim is just that much of a magnetic personality. We wanna stick around forever, but you know, Rowan, go ahead.
Before we adjourn, I think there's one more thing, uh, that should be discussed, not in relation to the endorsement of, um, Grady's campaign, which that great, great work we got done there. But more specifically in relation to, um, a subject that's been brought up, at least in my opinion, a few times on the Discord server. Uh, Tim wants to stay for that, that's, that's good, but I, um, I think it's something that could be discussed very briefly and I think it's something we should discuss before next week, which I believe is gonna be on, um, the other application, if I'm not mistaken, the one where it's text-based. And I don't think it could be as easily discussed in a text-based format. Um, so as long as everyone's okay with me quickly mentioning that, and again, Tim, if you need to go, you don't need to stay for this. This is just more Pirate Party stuff. But I'll see what you think, Mitch, if I may take five or ten minutes of your time.
Rowan, let it rip.
Let it rip. Okay. Well, uh, in the Discord server, multiple times, there's people who mentioned like, what should we call it? Resistance tac- tactics in relation to ICE and immigration enforcement. There's been people who suggested. And I say this for the sake of just not misrepresenting them, but in short, I feel like they were alluding to community protection or self-defense values, um, which would be questionable uh, questionable legally in some cases, but that's what was expressed. The idea of, uh, encouraging, uh, um, action on that front. I personally think, uh, from a party level, that wouldn't be advisable. Um, but I still think that it was, it was important to mention because they've mentioned it multiple times and it's a subject that has been discussed. Um, and I think it's something we should at least have a response to, to be able to refer to people on Discord who say, oh, well, are you gonna, gonna talk about this? Are you gonna talk about this? And so we're talking about it now and I just wanna get that out there.
Thank you. Drew, go ahead.
We absolutely cannot endorse any violence of any kind. We, if we want to remain a legitimate political party in this country, we cannot endorse any of that stuff. And we, we honestly should tell anybody that wants to talk about that to not talk about that on our Discord server. It is not the place for that. Our, the place for, for, uh, for discussing those, uh, things that are protests is fine, but anything, anything that goes into, uh, to vandalism, violence, anything like that, especially that could be considered planning, we cannot have that on our server. This, and we, and we, and we absolutely cannot endorse any of that stuff here. That, that is people that are, that are separate from us. We cannot endorse that stuff. Uh, that's just my opinion.
Uh, that's beyond opinion, Drew. I think that that's, that's absolutely true. I think that you're right. We can, we don't even endorse illegal activity. When we say the United States Pirate Party, we, for example, when we talk about internet piracy, we advocate for the legalization of being able to pirate physical media or anything of the sorts. But we don't actively call people saying, hey, make sure you pirate every movie you wanna see because that's illegal. We don't call for illegal activities. We advocate for certain things to not be illegal, but we do not call for implicitly illegal activities. Calling for violence, calling for vandalism, calling for anything that's, that can get you arrested, that we don't endorse that and do not, under any circumstances, believe that that is what the United States Pirate Party stands for. If you come to our Discord trying to endorse violence, you're gonna get kicked. Uh, because that is not, that's not us. That's not what we're doing. We are a political party first and we are, we are not uh, we're also, we're a political party first and it's not like we're a radical organization second. We are, we are political party first for the people above all. It's, it's nothing. We're, we're not some terrorist organization committing violence. That's not who we are. That's not, that's not what we endorse. Um, I, that, that's really all I have to say about your point. Thanks for bringing that up, Drew. Rowan, go ahead.
Can I, so just to respond to that more so, is, not to say, let me be clear, I, I on a personal level, I'm not endorsing these statements. I'm just communicating them to the meeting writ large because it has been discussed in our Discord server and no, uh, there hasn't been action taken against those words. Not to say that there, there should be, or there should be like a conversation going on there. I just know that people, and we could, they didn't, they didn't explicitly advocate for violence, uh, either. They weren't saying commit violence against people. They were saying, oh, um, in relation to ICE, that was the discussion, I believe that it was in relation to about, um, the immigration enforcement there, um, how they're saying, should there be, uh, uh, I think, I'm not endorsing this, it's just, just to clarify their position. I don't wanna make it seem like they're just, um, asking for violence. That's what their position is. And I, I will say on a personal level, I agree with what you said, Mitch. Obviously, we're a political party. We're not, uh, we're not a military or paramilitary organization. We wouldn't justify, we would never justify any sort of violence, full stop. But I do think that if it's a discussion that shouldn't be happening, there should be, there should be, um, people responding to those messages, because I don't think we're I think, it shows one, two things. Either the, for example, people who, Drew was vocal and you were as well, Mitch, who are vocally against these things are not looking at the Discord as much, which maybe speaks to the value of having a Discord writ large. But secondly, uh, more so, I, I think that, yeah, we should obviously stick to what we are, which is a political organization of advocacy and candidacy and looking to govern. And so I'm covering my tracks because that's not my position. I was getting vocalizing that, the message of Discord and we should, um, respond to that on the Discord. So it doesn't have to be, um, a more, um, general subject, but yeah.
Well, thank you, Ron. Uh, and let me be clear, the only political parties that are seekingly, that are seeking to actively hurt Americans are, is the Democratic and Republican parties. The, the, the two main parties are the only ones with the history of hurting American people and they're the only ones that have a track record of hurting the American people. Uh, and we need to change that. And Ohio, you have a great opportunity to vote for Timothy Grady and have that opportunity to change that. Uh, I will also say, and this is to tie it all the way back to what you brought up to begin with, Rowan, we have opportunities for I suppose peaceful resistance is the best way I can describe it. When you put up flyers, you know, you could put up flyers promoting the Pirate Party, but you could also put up flyers towards immigration lawyers or people who would say, hey, immigrants, uh, you, you know your rights and have a QR code to a certain legal website that they can go to. Or if you had there, there are certain things you can do that may seem very minute that once you actually do it, you realize one person can make a very large impact doing just, ju- just very little things. And one of the very little things can be as simple as putting up a poster with information for someone that may be in immediate danger from, uh, from one of the many terrorist groups like ICE that are currently hunting American citizens. Uh, folks, is there anything abolish ICE? Is there anything else we have to discuss today? I'm seeing nothing. And let me, let me, uh, also say that ICE has been kidnapping people, uh, and arresting them without trial. Uh, whatever happened to, uh, what? No matter who you are in this country, you have the right to a free and fair trial. Uh, it's not a citizen's rights. It is anyone who is charged in this country. You have a right to a free and fair trial. ICE has been kidnapping citizens, not just people who are quote unquote illegal, which I don't even wanna I don't wanna flatter the phrase or I don't wanna give credence to the phrase illegal, because I do think the the pathway of getting here does not signify your standing as a person. But they, they've been targeting people beyond the legality of their citizenship. They have targeted American citizens of Hispanic and non-Hispanic descent, uh, and arrest them without trial. This is a dangerous time in our country and we as a political party have a responsibility to not only raise awareness and raise voices to it, but figure out ways to resist it. And the resist, as much as some people, I understand, they think that the the violent, the bloody, the revolution, and, and this is beyond, this isn't a left-wing thing, this isn't a right-wing thing. Because certain left-wingers will look at the, the Russian Revolution and certain right-wingers will look at the American Revolution and both will think, well, clearly we just need a revolt. And it's just we have to exhaust all options. It, it, re- revolution is such a final thing that I don't think people realize that a revolution or a civil war, anything of that sorts, it's not just something you're gonna watch on TV and tweet about. You know, when electricity goes out or food shipment stopped, you're gonna suddenly feel the effects of a revolution or a war. We can't allow the continued degradation of this country, but we cannot suddenly say, well, let's, let's throw it all away in hopes that, you know, my system will be better. And I, I understand the idealism of believing that your system may be better than the system we have now and I understand the fear that many of you may have in today's day and age and there's plenty of reason to be afraid. But in your fear, there's no reason to be drastic and that is what I will leave you on. And if I can once again ask for a motion to adjourn, we can, uh, maybe finish this up.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any objections? I hear none. Uh, so to our voting members of, uh, Pennsylvania, Arizona, Illinois and Florida and to our guests from Ohio and to Drew, I wanted to say to you that goddamn do I love this party because at the end of the day, I feel like this party represents not just the myself, but a vast majority of the American people, because we care about some things that people may not even realize they care about it. We care about things like being a good neighbor. We care about keeping cool, clean water. And if purchasing is an ownership, then piracy isn't theft. Vote pirate, victory is ours and I will see you next time. Folks, where there's one pirate, there is a Pirate Party. Have a good night.